Order for July 30th. Just a couple points of information. Dr. Yergin couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to sit in. Hopefully we can muddle through it. And Jeff's on the phone with us. So with that said, we'll turn over to Ms. Cody.
Okay. So if it's okay with everybody, I'm just going to start with, begin with an overview, and then I'll just answer any questions that you all might have.
Okay.
So let's start with an update on the current digest and the five-year history. As you all may recall, the budget was approved based on an estimated $111,534,900 in tax revenue. That estimate assumed an 8% increase in the tax digest. So now that the final numbers are in, you can see that the, we actually saw an increase of 8.67%, which slightly exceeded the projection. And so then moving on to the second page, you'll find the rollback rate calculation. So the rollback rate is the milage rate that would generate the same amount of property tax revenue as the prior year, assuming no reassessments occurred. So for this year, the rollback rate is 13.88 mils. If we maintain the current milage rate rather than adopt the rollback rate, the increase would be calculated at 7.35%, which requires us to advertise an increase, a tax increase under state law. And so then, so by keeping the milage rate unchanged, we would receive approximately $688,200 more dollars than initially budgeted. I did want to note that that increase reflects a growth in the tax digest, not a rate hike. And then a few more things I just kind of wanted to point out. The current milage rate is the lowest it's been in 25 years. Over the past three years, we've reduced the milage rate just over 1.25 mils. With all that being said, my recommendation is to keep the milage rate at the current level of 14.90, mainly just because we still have so much uncertainty surrounding our federal And I do have, I didn't, I didn't post it up here, but I do have the different, what, how it would affect tax revenue if we had decreases, if y'all want me to share what that would look like, or...
Let me see if you have it, we can look at it.
So if we decrease the milage rate a quarter of a mil, that would reduce our tax revenue a little over $1 million. A half a mil decrease would decrease our tax revenue a little over 2.7 million. 0.75 decrease would decrease our tax revenue about 4.5 million. And then if we went back to the rollback, it would decrease our tax revenue close to 6.4 million.
So, and I don't think there's any way to really project this, especially with any accuracy, but as far as the federal funding goes, still uncertainty in that area, keeping the milage rate the same. Do you feel like that's needed to absorb any of that uncertainty?
Well, and it, and we have, we have been given guidance that they are, they, we know for sure they're going to release our Title IVB funds, and we have been told that they are going to release some of our, you know, our other title funds, but we just don't have any guarantees on that yet. They haven't had the board meetings, and we don't know what it's going to look like next year. So, you know, our fund balance is not, it's conservative. And so I just feel like, you know, it just would concern me to decrease the milage rate again this year.
Do we have any idea when we might know more about the federal funding? Like, is it a few weeks away, or months away?
Well, I mean, I, I'm fairly certain we will get our federal funding this year. We just have no idea what next year's going to look like. Originally, we were told this year that we would not receive Title IVB, and then that all of our other title grants, except for Title I and our special education, was going to kind of be combined into a block grant. And we were kind of given the impression that it was going to be like about a 70% decrease over what we've received in prior years. So we really just don't know what next year's going to look like at all.
Right. And right now, we're kind of staffed and ready for the year that this is going to affect, so...
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
The timeline that you have listed, when does it have to be approved by? Is it the end of August?
Yes. I think it, I think it all has to be turned into the state by September 2nd.
Okay.
And we kind of tried to up it a little bit this year...
Right.
Because the county can't really set their rate until we set ours. So we back everybody up.
And the, kind of the trigger that starts it all is the tentative rate adoption.
Let me ask you this, and I should know this, because we ask it every year, I think, but if we adopt this tentative rate and get down to August and want to adopt a lower rate, does that start this whole thing over, or can we do that without any re-dos on the timelines and advertising and everything else?
So my understanding is that as long as we're not adopting a higher rate...
Higher rate.
We don't have to start the whole process over.
Does that make sense to everybody? If we get that right down to it, we actually want to lower it some, we can. But a lot of times, we've kind of monkeyed with the timeline. We had to start the whole timeline over, and we don't have enough time to really start over generally. So that's what I want to clarify, if we did get any feedback, or we changed our minds and wanted to lower it. But we have lowered it the last three years. So I think it's probably prudent to keep it the same, but that's just my, my feeling on it.
Well, and to that point, you know, it, it really didn't come in that higher than what we budgeted.
Right.
You know, it was very close to, to what the tax assessor estimated, so...
And just for y'all to benefit as the new board members, y'all, y'all understand why we have to have the public hearings, because even though we're not raising the milage rate, and this comes up every year, that we're raising taxes, even though we didn't raise the milage rate, but we are realizing more tax revenue, so that's why we have to advertise and have the hearings, so...
Proper tax value.
That's right.
Yeah. Are we, do we collect at 97% this year?
Um, that, I, I haven't looked at that exactly. That's the recommendation of the Tax Commissioner, is for us to use the 97% figure. I haven't gotten through everything for fiscal year '25 yet, but I can, I can look at that and let you know for sure.
What did we do last year, cross collection?
Um, I think last year was around 97%.
In the past few years, it's historically been in the high 90s. So that hadn't been out of line.
Right. And that was, I, I checked with him before I did the budget this year, and that was his recommendation, so I'm on with that.
And we do need a vote tonight to adopt the tentative, correct, to get it moving?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that will keep us on the timeline.
Got you.
And again, the timeline can stay set as provided that the recommendation I made to exceed the tentative adoption rate.
Mike, I'm in agreement with you that, to go with the recommendation tonight, and if we have different information in three weeks, then maybe we can have another discussion about it.
Okay.
But not, not raising it.
So we need it the same?
Yes, we have 14.9.
I'm for that.
Anybody want to make that form of a motion?
I'm trying to make it now.
Okay. Mr. Madal.
I'm sorry about that. I didn't mean to be smart at that point. But I make a motion that we go with our recommendations, Ms. Cody's.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Madal and Second Amendment Mr. Jackson to adopt the tentative milage rate at 14.9. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Dodger.
I. It's unanimous, 6-0. All right. Good deal. Next, we have personnel. Ms. Seals, I guess we'll go do everything in the back. So we'd need a motion to go to executive session for personnel, I think some legal. Any land?
I do just have one update on land that I'll, I'll let you know about.
I'd like to make a motion that we recess to executive session to discuss personnel and real estate.
And legal?
And legal.
Okay. Perfect. Motion by Mr. Jackson. Second Amendment, Ms. Lee. All of you in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, 6-0.
At 609.
All right, we'll be back. All right, and we'll be back.